The recipe for great food is simple: make it fresh. Wings to Go in Greenville, where every order is a custom order made with fresh ingredients. Wings to Go, 7818 Wesley Street in Greenville. Simply great wings.
Need a part for the right price? Look for that red and blue sign. Henley Auto Supply at 1510 Stonewall. Over 800,000 Carquest parts to choose from. Domestic, European, and Asian parts. Henley Auto Supply at 903-455-1969. 455-1969. Henley Auto Supply has the right parts to keep your vehicle running, and backed by the best hometown service. Henley Auto Supply: great people, great products, great prices. Henley Auto Supply and Carquest.
Okay, if we could, I apologize for the light. Is my foot this man on? Huh? You don't stand like it does it?
Test, test. Is ransom, is mayor ransom on? She said you're on.
Okay, if we could, we'd like to start the meeting in just a few minutes. We apologize for not starting at 6 o'clock. Certainly welcome all of you to the meeting, and we're honored that you'd be here. And so I'll call this regular session meeting, the May 25th meeting, to order with an invocation by Mr. Dr. Dewey Davidson of the Prairie View Church. Dr. Davidson, please stand.
Father Williams, I want to thank you for how good you've been to us. Thank you for the city that you've given us to raise our kids and to live and enjoy life. Father, we do pray for Greenville that you'll put your blessings on it, your prosperity. I pray for our city councils, they make decisions. Lord, we know that if anybody lacks wisdom, just ask of you and you'll give wisdom. So I ask, Lord, that you give wisdom to our councils, they tackle a lot of tough decisions. I pray for protection, that you protect our city from the virus and anything that might hinder our kids, our families. Father, I just pray that you'll help us, to put you first, to live for you. And Lord, I know that your blessing has always been on this city. We ask you to continue to bless us with your power and your presence. And we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Davidson. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have a few presentations this evening. The first presentation is a Memorial Day proclamation that Kristen would like to give. Could you do that, please, for us? Yes.
I would like to present this proclamation to Mr. John Turner. And it reads, "Office of the Mayor proclamation. We, the mayor and city council of the city of Greenville, Texas, do hereby recognize Memorial Day 2021, whereas on Monday, May 31st, 2021, in cities throughout our nation, Americans will join to honor the fallen heroes of our armed forces. And whereas in May 1868, Major General John A. Logan called for nationwide day of remembrance to pay tribute to those who gave their lives serving our country, which only would officially be designated as Memorial Day by Congress, and whereas by 6.8% of Texas population are veterans who have served in our armed forces. And whereas we must pledge to never forget the men and women of the armed forces who have ultimate sacrifice in defending our freedoms, we will take this time to express our gratitude to the families of our fallen warriors. And now therefore, on behalf of this Greenville City Council, we hereby recognize Monday, May 31st, 2021, as Memorial Day in honor with our unwavering commitment to the members of all those who have served and continue to serve our great nation, in testimony where of witness in my hand this 25th day of May, 2021."
As Commander of the Disabled Veterans, Chapter 81, here in Greenville, I graciously accept, on behalf of all the veterans past, present, and future to come. And just as a little remembrance, American flag always goes on the right. Whoever set it up.
Now, we have a presentation, a tribute to Dennis Strickland, who many of you knew, and I think Kevin Banks is going to deliver that for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Friend, selfless, community treasure, inspiration, welcoming, encouraging, and heart of gold. These are just a few of the words and phrases people who knew Dennis Wayne Strickland used to describe him. We lost Dennis in November of 2020. And since May is his birthday month, we felt that it was appropriate and fitting to share just a few of the tributes to Dennis upon his death from some of those who knew him the best. So what I'm about to read are literally words and phrases from people who loved Dennis and who he touched. Dennis was one of the best things about Greenville. He was a shining example of being human. He always encouraged all artists and praised their work. Dennis was fascinated by the film and documentary about Fred Rogers, and after people saw the film, they quickly coined Dennis as Greenville's Mr. Rogers. He made sure everyone felt loved and appreciated. He was all about celebrating others, encouraging them, and lifting them up. He was a blessing to all who knew him. Dennis was the kindest soul you could ever hope to meet. He spread joy wherever he went. His radiant personality lit up every room. No one could ever deny the light within Dennis. Dennis leaves a legacy of love, acceptance, and encouragement. Every time Dennis saw people, he would say, "You are wonderful." And he did it because he really liked to make each and every person feel special, needed, and loved. Dennis was the true meaning of "Let the works I've done speak for me." Greenville will never be as happy as it was when it was filled with Dennis's enormous laughter and bright smile. His kind soul is a refreshing gift to our community for the short time that we had him. We should all strive to make others feel as special as Dennis did. We're all so lucky that his contributions will continue to impact our community for decades to come. Thank you, Dennis Wayne Strickland.
Thank you very much. Now, I have a brief announcement to make. In mid-May, we were notified by Atmos Energy that the interim rate adjustment that they had planned for us, which we had denied, that would become effective June the 11th of this June of 2021. They have elected because of COVID and because of the winter storm to delay that interim rate adjustment until September the 1st. And that is an announcement, just so our citizens will know what's happening. So I wanted to mention that. We're grateful for that consideration, and I thought it deserved mentioning in this meeting. So, at this point, I want to mention that there are declarations in our agenda, if you have one, for citizens to be heard. Citizens to be heard speak on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak during that period, which is coming up right now, you'll need to get a card to the city secretary. And also, there's a declaration for public testimony that applies to in your agenda items 7, 8, and 9. So if you'd like to speak on either of those issues, please register with the city secretary. Are there citizens to be heard?
Yes, Ricky Nelson.
Please state your name and address as you come up here, if you will, please.
It's Ricky Nelson, and it's 4515 Moulton. It's just right down the road, about a block and a half. Thanks for being here, guys. I know it's a thankless job, and I appreciate what y'all do. But my concern is, I had, it was drawn to my attention that there was a radio contract, an infrastructure contract being out, and I didn't get in on the bid process. And my concern is, is I thought I was a vendor with the city. I had done lots of work. Everybody that I did work for was very satisfied with my work. I've been in the business for about 20 years now, and I've got lots of references, lots of customers. I build out infrastructures for municipalities, school districts, warehouses. And I also sister with other companies when the contract is a very large contract. So it's just a concern of mine, and I came to y'all to see today if I could get some kind of information as to how your bidding process is and how I would be able to, in the future, get in on some of the bids. And, because I've been here all my life, and, you know, like I say, I'm a taxpayer of the community, and I just think it's, you know, y'all want to try to do things local, and I think you try to keep your vendors local would be a nice thing, because everybody's always encouraging people to buy local, and here I am, a local vendor, and I can't, I get, I miss out on some of the local contracts. And so I'm just coming to y'all tonight and letting y'all know my concern. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Nelson, I'm assuming we have your telephone number?
Yes, sir.
And someone for our staff will contact you in the next few days.
Okay, thank you very much.
Regarding that issue. Thank you.
Gabby McCreary.
Hello. Congratulations to our new Bürgermeister, Mr. Renze. Congratulations. I'm Gabby McGary. I live at 1106 Wolf City Drive. I've been living there for 46 years. I wasn't born here, but I came as soon as I could. My passion is keep Greenville beautiful. And I've been doing that for the last 46 years, trying to do everything good in my city to keep it beautiful. Well, I noticed that we have lately, I notice a little bit more than I want to see, like trash cans everywhere, and people mowing, and spitting out the grass on the street, and all kinds of things. And I just would like to ask you if it's feasible to get a little flyer into the city juice bill, you know, that we get monthly, with some of the dos and don'ts to keep Greenville beautiful. And I like to even know a few of our city ordinance. So when somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do, I can jokingly say, "Hey, don't you know that there is a city ordinance? You can't leave your trash can out for seven days a week. You have to bring it in and hide it," and many other little things. But anyway, I did go to a juice last year, and she was very excited about that putting it in to a flyer. But then I got a little note back from her, and she told me that the city managers, I mean, her boss said we couldn't do it because the city manages all of these areas of service, and they have the ability to create and have inserts run in the bills as well. It would be best... It would be best if we didn't overstep our bounds in this area. So I asking you, as the city, is it feasible to put a flyer maybe sometimes in our bill and let our citizen know? Because the bill will go to each household. And that way, everybody will see that flyer, make it bright pink or something though it hits you when you open the bill. And just put a few dos and don'ts. And I have a whole list of dos and don'ts, you know, for suggestions if you want to see that. But maybe it can be done one day, and we can do that and let our citizen know. And hopefully, they see it and say, "Oh, we got to do that." And, you know, have a little pride in our city and keep it beautiful. Because I'm planning to stay here, and I want to see everything nice. Thank you for listening to me.
Could you submit your list of those notes to the city secretary?
I sure will.
Tonight, please, if you will, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Anderson.
I'm having trouble.
My name is Nathan Anderson. I live at 4801 Pickett Street. My issue is my yard is flooding. Not only my yard, but across the street is the church, and it also flooded. We need a better drainage system, storm drainage system. I also brought pictures. I brought pictures that y'all can look at. I don't know if y'all want to pass them around or what, but I was hoping that maybe y'all can get the city to come out and, you know, do something about it. I bought this home three years ago. And I really don't want no foundation problems. This is causing erosion, foundation problems. And I was trying to get it fixed before, you know. But here's the pictures. And my other issue is I want to talk about the Greenville Reservoir. And have y'all came up with a solution about that because I'm myself like the fish also. And I just want to show some support for all the fishermen's out there.
Are you willing to leave these photographs with us?
Yes, y'all can have them.
Okay.
Y'all need my contact?
Yes, we do. We need your contact. If you, can we get your telephone number? Please.
Byron Taylor.
Hello, Byron Taylor, 5106 Meadowbrook Drive, Greenville, Texas. Welcome, everybody, to your new positions and your new, and the new people. My subject is brief. When I perused over your goals and initiatives for the coming year, I didn't see the word downtown written one time. Maybe I missed something, or maybe you have that wrapped up in cultural things that you have on there. I just wanted to mention to you that I went to Mesquite, Texas this past weekend and visited Kim Buttram, who used to work for the Board of Development here. And I was enticed to go because they had a new item in their downtown called Front Street Station. I knew that Mesquite did not have the Dart Rail System there, so the word station kind of confused me. So I wanted to go over there and see what they had done. But along the railroad track on the backside of their downtown, where everything was ugly and nothing but parking and terrible parking lots, they've completely redone that, put a stage and put a pedestrian pass-through through their downtown. And the reason why we haven't mostly heard about downtown Mesquite is because the whole town downtown, even though Mesquite is large, is very nondescript. So they made it descript. I'd like to help you on anything I can do to form a committee. I think that we've been talking about this for, as far as I know, 13 years. I know probably longer for some, for others. But you probably have a large downtown contingent here tonight. There's things that we can do. They spent $6 million, and they told me most of what they spent was underground. That what they did was not elaborate. And what we can do to get started can happen. The main thing I want to say is, we tend to talk about how much something like this might cost. We tend to ignore what the economic impact might be if we could just get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
James Evans.
James Evans, 6410 Buena Vista Drive, Greenville, Texas, 75402. I'm here tonight representing myself and retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Buddy Crump. Where again, we'd like to ask you to support, join us in supporting Mr. Terry Thomas for Place One Greenville City Council. And again, for all of many people that watch us out in Facebook land. Hope you will support us too. And again, in this effort, we want to encourage you to vote early, those of you in Place One, June 1st through June 8th. And that will be at the voter registration down across from the Farmer's Market, June 1 through 8. And then again, the day of the final election will be on June the 12th, here at this very civic center. And again, on behalf of retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, doesn't that sound great, what he did for our country? True patriot, trying to elect another true patriot, Mr. Terry Thomas, Place One Greenville City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul Park.
Paul Park, 207 Patterson Drive, Greenville. My comment tonight is a procedural suggestion. Mayor Dryling and I talked about this about a year ago. And it was kind of being covered. We've kind of drifted away a little bit, and that is on citizens to be heard. What I would encourage, because a lot of citizens, probably some here tonight, have the feeling that they're just put on ignore, and the city council doesn't care what they have to say. I don't believe that, having dealt with the city council for quite a while. What I would suggest is the statement that's on here specifically point out that the city council is prohibited by state law from specifically discussing items not listed on the agenda. Let people know that legally, you cannot respond to what they've said. A lot of people don't read the fine print. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Mr. Park, did you still want to talk about the budget?
I do.
This would be the same time.
This is in, I haven't moved, same name. This is in relation to the, in reference to the last city council meeting, where when the presentation on the budget procedure was given, a statement was made that it was important that the staff know what the tax rate was going to be. I don't think that's the way budgets are supposed to work. Budgets, at this point, should be a planning tool of what you need, where you need to go. Figure out what it takes, what you need for the care and feeding of the city. You are then going to get the assessed value from the tax assessor's office. Divide that by 100, because it's per 100 assessed value. Take that number, divide it into what you came up with. Now you have the tax rate. Otherwise, you're taking the assessed value, a tax rate, this is how much money we got, how do we spend it? My granddaughter's logic. Thank you.
John Turner.
John Turner, 3702 Pepperport, Greenville. First off, I'd just like to congratulate the council on their seats, Mayor S.W. Number two, subject near and dear to my heart, this is happening this Saturday. Carry the load is coming through. They'll be at Farmer's Market at 2:00 PM. If you'd like to walk from there to Gibson's Automotive, it's about a 3.2 mile walk. So they'll leave there and be at Gibson's Automotive about 4:00 PM. If you can't walk, you can always donate or put the word out and get somebody else to walk for you. So just thought I'd like to spread that word. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more?
No more. Okay.
John Kelso.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville, 75402. Couple of months ago, the council approved, I think, the design of the Roy Warren Parkway extension. I don't know if anybody's been talking to staff about what's going on with that design. Maybe the Transportation Subcommittee's been meeting. I don't know. I haven't seen notice for those open meetings. I know they're open to the public, although, for me, if you don't give us, if you don't tell us where you're meeting and when you're meeting, it's not hardly open, in my mind. Maybe they're hidden in the website somewhere, and it's just hard to find. I hadn't seen it. But to be really open, you need to tell us when and where you're meeting. If you have been meeting with staff, I hope you're telling them that you don't want a four-lane highway on that extension. The traffic pattern of that, of that road would not support a four-lane highway for years and years and years to come, if ever, maybe. The traffic pattern on the, on the original Roy Warren Parkway between Traders Road and the Frontage Road doesn't even support four-lane for the traffic that goes up and down there. Even when they closed down, made the Frontage Road one-way, it didn't, it didn't support. And doesn't today even. A lot of people would say even Traders Road traffic does not support four lanes. Because, I mean, it's evident, we've shut down two lanes in a half-mile stretch there, and to no effect. So I'm all for building things that are going to last a long time. But I'm also all for only building things we need. If we don't need a four-lane road there, then we shouldn't make a four-lane road. We, you know, two lanes with a center left turn lane, three lanes total, would, is all that really would be needed. Now, you might say, "Mr. Kelso, we're building, you got to think to the future, man. We're building for the future." Okay, well, let's talk about the future. TechDOT has already announced and has on their books and plans, they're going to make Highway 34 Wesley, four lanes from the interstate down to 1570. So if they're already going to do that to support, you know, the traffic in the future, why in the world do we make a four-lane highway a quarter mile to the east, parallel? It just, it just, I just don't understand. We just don't need to do that. You'll save a million and a half dollars if you just eliminate one lane on that extension. And that's a million and a half dollars that we could use for other infrastructure in the city that's, that's well needed. Thank you.
Greg Sims.
Greg Sims, Greenville Board of Development. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to put a plug in, since this was being broadcast on Facebook, and hopefully citizens will hear this. But as we reported tonight, our, our area industrial employers are having a difficult time finding employees. There's lots of good factory jobs out there in Greenville. And if you don't know it, you can go to GreenvilleTXjobs.com. That's GreenvilleTXjobs.com. That was a clearinghouse website of a lot of our employers on there that have hiring websites. It'll take you directly to their hiring page. But I want to encourage you, all of you, if you know folks that live here and need a job, please contact these employers. Specifically, we have a job fair with the Greenville High School tomorrow with the graduating seniors. That we are only talking to the seniors about jobs in our city. And the companies that are attending that job fair is Innovation First, West Rock, International Grain and Cereal, Chelsea Building Products, Rhino Linings, Masonite, and Sabre Corporation. All those are great factory jobs here, they're great job, great companies we have here. We can't do our job, we can't do our business here in Greenville if we don't have employees. So if you know anyone, please tell them to go and to GreenvilleTXjobs.com. And you can get on their hiring websites. But they are needing people really bad, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more?
No.
Okay, we'll move into public hearings. 6A is consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit. That is for prepackaged liquor retail sales at property located at 8118 Wesley Street.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to motion to postpone this action, any action to this matter until the regular meeting of July 13th, 2021.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion is to delay any action on this until July 13th, 2021. Is there any discussion among the council? Not? Can you vote, please? Has Ben with us over there? Okay. Please vote.
I don't know how to vote from here. Okay.
Why try to vote? And has Ben voted? Voted up? Okay. It passes. And with his, with his votes, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing a change in zoning from office to multifamily on property located at 3600 Cato Street. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the applicant is requesting a zoning change from office to multifamily. The property is located in the northern part of Greenville, north of O'Neal Street. Currently, the area is pretty much zoned multifamily. However, the existing zoning of that parcel and the parcel below it is office. When you look at the future land use plan, the existing one that we have, that area has been also designated as office. And that is possibly because of the historical uses of those areas, being a dental office and have a hospital to the south of it. However, surrounding those properties, the future land use plan actually calls for low-density residential properties. The applicant is planning to use that existing building for a dormitory that will house approximately two to six, I guess, young adults who have aged out of foster care. And the ages they have said that will be there will be between 18 and 24. Basically, although they're requesting a multifamily zoning because the surrounding areas are multifamily, all of those areas that are zoned multifamily are actually single-family residents. And so it doesn't, although it matched the zoning, it wouldn't match the uses of the area. We actually sent out 21 property notices to property owners, and we received zero responses in favor at the time of the P and Z meeting, and seven responses in opposition, and then one returned by the mail. And basically, their concerns were just the conditions of the area, historical drug use and activity that was unwarranted, and they didn't want anything that would potentially add to that. And also, just landlords were just concerned about the safety of their tenants. And since the meeting, we have received a few emails from people, two people in particular, who were in favor. But the motion, it did pass four to three for P and Z.
Was that denied? So there were seven?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. The motion, I'm sorry, was denied.
All right.
Four to three, P and Z, yes.
Okay, and there were seven responses in opposition and two in favor of it, is that right?
Two in favor since the P and Z meeting, yes. But seven in opposition for property owners surrounding that area. Some of them were landlords, and some of them were residents who had concerns, so, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
I have a couple of questions for Latora, if you don't mind. Latora, on that, where that building is, is that the lot, the whole thing, from street to street?
Yeah, the, the property there.
The property, that's from street to street?
It encompasses the entire.
I think it encompasses the entire block.
If, if it was rezoned to multifamily and, say, the new owners decided to expand, do you know how many dwelling units they could roughly put in that area?
No, not without knowing the acreage, no. I mean, they, they have so many things that they would have to plan for as far as parking and different requirements. So it, it basically depends on the height, the story, you know? It could range.
Okay. Okay. Is, with this in office, is, would there be any possibility, instead of a hard zoning change to, to multifamily, to do something like a conditional use to allow this?
No. They would have to just do a zoning change to multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Their use is not even permitted in multifamily, so we wouldn't be able to do a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Who's the staff opinion that answered these questions? Is it one person or the actual staff?
Generally, it's a, it's a consensus of staff.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, it did.
And I noticed there was a memo sent to the city council members from the owner of the property. Was that included in the documents for P&amp;Z, the P&amp;Z hearing?
No.
Was that something that?
Was it? Yes, it was, it was.
It was included in those?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, I will, can the, I'd like, I guess, for the applicant to come forward and speak. Tell us about your plans, if you will, please. Introduce yourselves.
My name's Larry Crosby, reside at 66, or 9966 County Road 2422 in Roy City. I'm a real estate commercial broker, just here to effectively ask for the zoning change. These people are the director of the facility, Steve and Christie Glass, so they, and the founder of POEMA, who is the proposed new owner, so they will be able to address any, any questions as far as the facility and operations.
Okay.
You know, and in this zoning change, it's, like was said, I've missed my map here, everything around this property is zoned multifamily. It is just an oddball circumstance, I think, that this particular property is owned office. There's, there's no real reason in my mind, there's certainly no traffic, our streets don't entice a office zoning over there. And from a, a density standpoint, if this one-acre tract, which could arguably, if it was tore down, builds 18 units there, if this tract was zoned single-family, that would be replanted into six lots. So now you've got a density over there of, you figure two people per lot, you've got 12, 14 people living on those in single families. So I think it, the, the use is appropriate for multifamily. It does fit the neighborhood. It fits all the surroundings of it. There's, I don't know why we would leave it as office.
The property's currently vacant. Do you know how long the property's been vacant?
Just about a year at this point, I believe. It is currently owned by a nonprofit organization that, that was doing dental work out of there. They, and I think that's what that letter was that you alluded to, they certainly support this, this zoning change. They, they want something to continue in the area that, that is gonna be good for the community and nonprofit to take over.
Okay. Like you, each of you like to speak?
Yeah, I would like to just address the issue.
Can you introduce yourself and where you live, please?
Rebecca Jowers. I live at 3290 Annicade Circle in Rockwall.
Okay.
And the concern about the safety, just to let you know, the, the home will be for boys, it's, it's not boys who have any criminal record. We do an extensive two-week intake period where we, they fill out an application, and then there's a background check, check that's being done, so there would be no, anyone who is a, is registered sex offender, or if there's any felony convictions, they would be excluded from the program. So just to give you a story of the type of boy that we would be looking for to have in this home, my husband's been a rotarian in Rockwall for 30 years, and each year they have seniors write a essay, and they're applying for scholarships. So one young man who's graduating this year in Rockwall wrote an essay, his mother is a drug addict and has parties at the home every night. This young man has been working really hard, making good grades. He got a job, he was able to buy a vehicle, and he started parking his vehicle in the Walmart parking lot after school and sleeping in his car. And the reason he was doing that is he couldn't get sleep at home. Well, once his mom realized, hey, he hasn't been coming home, where is he? She realized he had a car, and she actually went to the Walmart parking lot, stole her own son's car, and sold it for drugs. So that's the type of young man who doesn't have family, who doesn't have support, that we want to provide a home for. I really took advantage having a home until I was called to this work of helping these kids, really, underprivileged kids who don't have a safe place to live. And once you provide that safe housing, just hearing about the factory jobs here got me excited, because if we can provide safe housing, then these young men can get a job, they can go to school. Many of them have a desire to go to college, you know, A&amp;M Commerce is down the street. And so we're excited about the opportunity, and as Larry was saying, there'll be six boys in the home, and there will be onsite resident assistants that live in the home, so the maximum would be six boys. And then we'll have lots of help from the community. We already have many churches and other organizations that are real excited about what we're doing and are willing to step in and help. So that's, that's our vision for the program, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind, ma'am. The, the information that came forward in our package said these were gonna be used for young men who have become too old to stay in fo, in the foster care system. So the story you just shared was not necessarily a foster care system, so are you opening this up for any young man in need?
Yes, many of the young boys will come from the foster system, because typically when they age out, they often don't have a transition program in place. They just need support. Really, we're not, we don't even call ourselves a program. What we are is more of a family. We come alongside them, and we are a faith-based organization, so it will be a discipleship program as well. Each boy will have a mentor. We already have other men that will come in and help with job training. So if there's a young man here in the community that just needs support, that hasn't gone through the foster system, they would be eligible. It doesn't necessarily have to be a child that's aged out of foster care.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question. Will there be someone there, an adult, that's monitoring this, like a dorm monitor or something, 24 hours a day?
So during the day, we will have day staff there, so we'll most likely have two people on staff, and that day staff will be the people that will help them get to job interviews, take them to the doctor, just help them with, you know, regular life skills. And then we will have a live-in RA, possibly a couple, or it might be a single male, that they will live onsite. So they will be there in the evening, and then when they need respite care, the plans that we have for the facility will provide an extra bedroom where respite care will be there. So that's where we rely on our churches and community partners that have had training to come in and spend the night. So there will always be some type of supervision.
Go ahead.
Hey, I'm Christie Glass, wife of Steve Glass, who is the actual director of this upcoming organization under POEMA. I just wanted to, I need to probably state my address, 6570 County Road 2297 in Quinlan, here in Hunt County. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to, to listen to.
Can you hold just a second? Can people in the back, can you hear? The acoustics is not very good, but, okay, if you can, if you can't, wave your hand, okay? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Just wanted to give a little bit of background, how we are involved. Last September, I should start back by saying several years ago, Steve has had a, a passion to work with aging-out foster boys, those that are the fatherless. And it was such a, such a passion last September, we took a really big step of faith, and he retired from his job and a fifth of his salary, but it was a real calling, a passion and a calling. And since then, we've connected with Rebecca, and it just seems like a perfect fit with this organization. I was executive director for Boys and Girls Club several years ago, and firsthand saw the fatherless, the struggles that these boys went through, and the mentorships that developed have really changed lives there. Steve came alongside me, taught a character-building class, amazing results, just beautiful picture of what the love of Christ can do in a child's life when, where you, at home, does not have that support. So now I come alongside him, and I hope that you will fully support this, because you will have, we will have the support that is needed to give these young men what they deserve.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve. I live 6570 County Road 2297 in Quinlan, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the director of the Boys Home, and first, let me just do a little paperwork here. I have a, a list of 15 organizations and individuals that support, have worked with us and have supported us, and will be continuing to support us as we move forward. Earl, can I give that to you? I would like to, if I could. I think you received some emails, letters today. Those are all got in the packets. Okay, that's fine. So there, we, we did send some other, I called some other folks and asked them to send letters of support, so you should receive those if you haven't received those already. I'd also like to take a second and recognize the people in the audience, if I may, that are here in support, just to give you an idea of the support that is here tonight. Would you all mind raising your hands, please, standing up? There you go. Thank you all. Thank you very much. So we've got, we've got a lot of support. We've been talking with the different organizations, the labor force, the Job Work Commission, the different individuals that can, we can help find jobs for these guys. Basically, in a nutshell, I'll try to be brief, but in a nutshell, what we're looking to do is give these guys a safe home, give these guys a safe family, family community, and give them, and give them education, give them access to education and work, and then try to nurture them along, become a part of community, because whether, whether we know it or not, they're already here. Statistics tell us that in Hunt County, that approximately 10 people age out every year, male and female, and if you assume that half of those, national statistics tell us that half are boys, that means that there are four or five guys a year that are aging out of, that are aging out of the foster care system, in addition to other guys, like Rebecca mentioned, that aren't in the foster care system, that are just on their own. So they're, they're already. The question is, what will we do with them? So in this, the, I was here last night at the council me, at the planning commission meeting, the safety issue is a valid, I understand their concern. We mentioned that the background checks, we mentioned the security measure, the surveillance cameras, the locks on the doors, the fences, the 24-hour, the 24-hour supervision. I, I have to say that this is probably safer than, this is, this is a safer dwelling place than any of the houses in the area, as far as the background checks that are, are, are done, the, the pains that we take to make sure that we have a good case, because this, this person that we're, we're working with is a long-term commitment for us. This, the program is upward to two years, and what we're trying to do is trying to help these guys get education, get a vacation, and be a, be a supporting member of the community, be a vital active member, a positive influence, negative. The, the other comment that was mentioned was the comment about the, the density. We're talking about, we're talking about six, six young men and an RA, or, or two RAs if it's a couple. So you're talking from seven to eight people on the, on one acre versus, if you go with the mash, use, mashland use plan, you can have at least minimum three houses per acre, which would be a greater density. We feel like that it's less dense, and also it's a safer situation than that's currently there. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
What churches is gonna help you in the city?
Well, right now, we've talked with, we've, we're all members of Lake Point Church in, in Rockwall, also the Prittymans, Rick and June Prittman are with, with Christ Community Church, and we've been contacting, we've talked with other people, we haven't had any other, I don't think any other people showed up tonight. There's a Rockwall church plant here as well.
No, that's the.
Oh.
I haven't seen.
But anyway, and we're, we've, we've been talking with other churches, and we're, we're really open to having any church come alongside us that would be interested.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think your, your organization is based in Rockwall County, is that correct? Yet, what I'm hearing, and I don't think that came out in the P&amp;Z, is the young men who would be occupying this facility would be, would be sourced from, or would come from Hunt County, is that correct or not?
It will, it could, it will, depending on, depending who comes to us, because they'll be interviewed. If someone comes from Rockwall, they, they have an interview process, and they sound like they're a good fit, yes, they would. But we have plenty, we talked with the Bowles Children's Home. I talked with Joel late, last week, and Joe Daros, the, the executive director, he says this is a good fit, because some of the guys, as, you know, if you can imagine being in a, being in an orphanage or a group home setting, cottage home setting, you reach age, you wanna be on your own. While they do have a college and career group, he sees this as an alternative for, if they don't want to be part of that, part of the Bowles Children's Home anymore. So we're excited about partnering with them as well. So while we do have the people here, it'll kind of be, kind of the first come, first served. If we have, we have other organizations that we partner with, Direction 613, they have, they have a home, a Boys Home in McKinney. With the networking, if someone comes up and says, we have, we have a person that's, that's interested in coming to your, coming to your facility, then we would entertain that. But like, like you mentioned, there are plenty of, there are plenty of kids in Hunt County as well.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all. We know it's a tough decision, but we appreciate y'all's time.
Yes. Okay. Now we will open the public hearing and open up for anybody who will speak in favor, would like to speak in favor of this proposal.
Brent money?
Zoning change.
I have Brent money.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I, I strongly support this group. I've met with, with their director and several of their members. When, when they first brought this to me, I was, I was on city council, and they were talking about bringing it in. It's in our district, I know the area well. And this is a, this is a good group of people that want to take a real problem in our community, which is men that, that just need mentorship and care. These are not necessarily kids who are criminals or, or, or have those kinds of problems. They need someone to come along and teach them how to be a man. This is a mentorship, it's a godly formation-type group. They, they have a good track record in dealing with women in other communities, and really see a need to help men. Many of you know that I have two daughters and a son who were in the foster care system. We have a heart for, for these kids. And, and at least back when I was a licensed foster parent, Hunt County had, I think at that time, between 175 and 225 foster kids in the system, and about 25 foster families in the community. So our, our community has a need for people who will come alongside and, and teach these kids, give them a life. This is really just a zoning change. It's not, it's, it's, you know, we, we could talk about the merits of the organization, I'm looking forward to, to working with the organization, but it's a, it's a zoning change. And this is a, this is a fairly quiet neighborhood, and near, near where I live, I drive by it frequently. This is a, this is an office that's not being utilized, and I think it can be a, a very good asset to this community. And I understand why some people may be concerned about it, because they may be unclear or unsure about what it's gonna be, but I think, I think this gives Greenville an opportunity to do what it does best, which is to, through volunteerism, charity, philanthropy, help people in need. And we, we have a lot of great organizations that do that, and, and I think one that specifically caters to helping young men grow into men who are leaders in our community is, is an excellent one for us to get behind. So I strongly support this group and ask you to support this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maddy Robinson.
Good evening. I live over on 3530 Cal.
I live over on thirty-five-thirty Caddo Street, I've been there for forty-five years, and my neighborhood is not safe. That office was a pediatric clinic.
Well, are, are you speaking in favor of this, or opposed to it?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay, well, we're...
I only have, I only have...
Well, just call my name.
Right, they filled out their cards, I don't know if they're in favor or opposed.
Okay.
So do I need to go back?
Well, we'd like to have people who are in favor of this at this time.
Okay, well, I'm not in favor.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll call you back in a second. Yes, we will, thank you, sure. So is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? We'll, we'll call you back in just a second, I'm sorry.
Good evening again. I'm really not in favor or against, to be honest, that's up for y'all to decide, but I do want to mention something that we tend to forget sometimes in our community. I spend a lot of time, because I want this area to come back, which is inclusive of downtown, driving all of the streets between sixty-nine and Sacoa Boulevard, and if you haven't done that at city council, you really need to. If you haven't done that on P and Z, you really need to. There's a lot of houses going in on there, I know y'all know a lot of streets over there are in best condition, including this particular one we're talking about, but I do want to mention that this particular building is a mid-century modern building, it is a dynamic building, it's a very, very well-built building. I kind of attribute it, the same, the same category as Collin Street Bakery where that one sits, is, this, the building over here is a similar situation, and I would hope that the new owner, whoever they, whoever they be, keep, stay true to that architectural style. I've seen this particular kind of building being taken in big cities that are in warehouse districts that are built of this, this era, and designers and people who make handmade goods and all kinds of other things turn these into dynamic homes. The entire levee in Dallas is built with these kind of buildings, same style, and there's really cool buildings and art galleries and stuff all in there. I just want to make sure that y'all know that that's a tough area, if you haven't been over there, it, but there is new, there is new homes going on, on...